The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of August 15th is now called to order. The first item this evening on our agenda is the introduction of our newly appointed Planning Commissioner, Mr. Andrew Van J. Lubin. Do you want to introduce yourself? Give us just like a elevator speech of who you are and why you're here.
All right. So, hi everyone. My name is Andrew Van Lubin. I'm a professor, assistant professor at Oklahoma State University Department of Agricultural Economics. I don't teach, so my appointment is half research, half extension. And so, I do a lot of work with rural communities and community economic development. So, it's a natural fit to kind of, kind of be out of the ivory tower and, you know, finally on the other side of things. So, happy to be here.
Well, welcome aboard. All right. It'll be the order of business this evening. We will call for items on the agenda. The Commissioner will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor first, and then those in opposition of the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff and the applicant or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond and provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. Then, the Commissioner will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. The first item this evening is a specific use permit, S U P 2304.
I moved it out of the way earlier. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jaclyn Porter, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. This is a specific use permit for medical marijuana dispensary located at 211 North Perkins Road, Suite Number 10. This is near the intersection of North Perkins and East Hallifay Road. This is in the Rosewood Hills Shopping Center. There's Chick-fil-A's over across north of Hallifay. That is the Walmart there to the southeast of the subject property. The prior use of Suite 10 was a medical marijuana dispensary. This is a change of ownership of license, which requires to be before you. The zoning is C S, which an S U P is required in the zoning district for medical marijuana dispensary. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Jaclyn. At this time, I'd ask if the applicant is present and would like to come forward and make any comments to the Planning Commission?
My name's Sam Navarro. I've never done this before, so I don't really know what's expected, but I-
That's okay. Could you give us your address just for the record, so we can get it in the minutes?
My home address or the address of the business? 211 North Perkins?
That works. Thank you.
Okay. I don't really have anything to say or anything prepared, but the, all I wanted to make sure was that it, it was just a license transfer. It was already, we already had this specific use permit, but they said since a change of ownership that we had to go through this process again. So, that's, it was, nothing changed, not even the name, so.
All right. Are there any questions from the Commissioners to the applicant? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item to please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
Oklahoma State law allows for medical marijuana facilities. The Land Development Codes allows the use of medical marijuana dispensaries and commercial shopping districts with a specific use permit. Parking is sufficient for the intended use. Your alternatives tonight for this subject is accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented, or find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impact to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the City Council approve the request. Or, your final option is find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Motion to accept the findings and recommend that the City of Stillwater Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
Second.
We have a motioning in a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a short-term rental. This is short-term rental, S T R 0110.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Diana Hood. I'm the Associate Planner. And as stated, this is a request for a short-term rental license at the address 1502 North Wildwood Drive. This item was tabled from the last Planning Commission meeting for further discussion. Here's a reminder of the area of the subject property. The Planning Commission is the hearing body for short-term rentals. The hearing is held as a specific use permit hearing, except there is no staff report or presentation. The criteria by which the Planning Commission is to review the S T R application is Section 23-180 attached with the consideration criteria in your packets. Are there any questions for staff?
There doesn't appear to be any questions. Thank you. So, at this time, I'd like to ask if the applicant or their representative would like to come forward?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Mark Weiser, 223 North Old Highway 51, Stillwater. I, we just had a breakdown of communications with Debbie, the person who was here at the last meeting. My wife, Angela, and I will actually be coordinating, basically managing this property. And I, I was not aware there was an objection, or I would have been here. And so, there were a couple issues. One was what the plan was to manage the property. It will actually primarily, tenants will primarily come from Airbnb, so the vetting process that was discussed does occur. If anything, that's gotten tighter. So, in other words, one-day rentals from anyone local generally, they won't even allow us to accept. There is a process to get through that, but we don't want those either. The, as a matter of fact, inexperienced renters from anywhere in the state of Oklahoma are often rejected for that same, out of that same fear. This particular home out of, we coordinate services for nine properties, actually. This particular property is probably, I would argue, almost the best suited to not impact because you, it has space for 11 large vehicles, and we would never have that many vehicles. But, the point is, is that, that vehicles could actually be off the street for a typical, the, the typical profile of, of a stay would be, you know, an extended family for an event. For instance, during the, during the summer, we had a lot of people with weddings, so, you know, you have two or three families staying together rather than getting three hotel rooms. You know, they can stay together. Or Thanksgiving, you know, they, they want to have their family together, but the person who lives in Stillwater has too small a house, so now they have a larger house and they can cook dinner, you know. So, the other issue was in the objection, actually didn't have anything to do with a short-term rental, but a storage facility. Ms. Nasal Rhodes is actually here, but it seems like the crux of it was a management change, and that happened in 2021. And that was actually, her business was sold, she sold that business in February of 2021. So, the, the, from my read, now that I was kind of reading into it, I'm not really, it was that management change that was the issue. And that was when she sold. The management change was her selling the company. But she is here, if you want to ask. But if anyone has any questions for me?
Any questions? I think, I think you answered all the questions that we had raised at the previous meeting.
Thank you. I tried.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is another short-term rental. This is S T R 0118.
As stated, this is another application for a short-term rental license for the property addressed as 311 South Isler Lane. Here is an area map of the subject property. It is located within the Westwood Overlay District. The Planning Commission is the hearing body for short-term rentals, and the hearing is, as stated previously, held as a specific use permit hearing, except there is no staff report or presentation. The criteria is from Section 23-180 of the Land Development Code. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you. So, at this time, we'd like to allow the opportunity for the applicant or their representative to come forward.
My name is Catherine Morris, and my address is 3002 San Tropez Court in McKinney, Texas. I purchased this home at 311 Isler Lane two summers ago for my children to live in while they attend O S U. It's also the place my family and friends stay when we come to watch them perform in the Cowboy Marching Band and other concerts, ensembles, and musicals throughout the school year. I don't want to sell the home yet, but I'm unable to pay for two mortgages, and my children aren't living there at the moment. So, making this a short-term rental will hopefully provide enough income to pay the bills, so that I can continue to enjoy and improve the home. Because I'm speaking to you, the Planning Commission, and to my neighbors, because I do recognize them, I'd like to have a moment to explain what owning this home means to me. My grandparents lived in California after World War II and worked so hard to make ends meet. My grandpa was able to provide for his family and save for retirement through wise investments. When they were gone, they gave me some of their investment, and what an honor it is to be gifted part of what my grandpa worked so hard to earn. Every choice I make with this gift brings feelings of such gratitude and responsibility in using it a way that would make them proud. So, this investment, this home, is something I believe my grandparents would be proud of. I have loved that house since the moment I walked inside. This Texan dreams of moving to Stillwater someday and living there, so I love this community that much. While it is a beautiful, unique, and in my eyes historic home, it needed a lot of TLC, and in so many ways, it still does. I know my neighbors have seen the significant amount of time that my mom, dad, husband, brother, nephews, children, and myself have spent working inside and out. When our abilities make it to where we can't do the job, I've hired locals to help us out. Since purchasing this home, the property value has risen substantially with the improvements that have been made. I say all this because, like my neighbors, I would be devastated if my property and community were destroyed by our renters. I do not want people violating the parking expectations or having obnoxious parties. I care about this neighborhood and those who live in it. I want people to come and enjoy and care for this home as much as I do. For these reasons, I will have several policies in place to prevent bad renters. There is a two-night minimum stay. No like local renters will be allowed in an effort to prevent careless parties. There will be no automatic booking, which leaves me the opportunity to carefully screen those who will be staying using the platform's rating guest system. I will have a no-party policy, and there may not be extra overnight, overnight guests. The parking policy will follow all Westwood Overlay District guidelines. Up to eight cars can be parked on the driveway and in the garage, which is more than enough for 10 guests. And the policy explains that no one can park or drive in the grass as well as on Isler Lane, despite there being no signage indicating the rule that you cannot park on Isler Lane. I will make sure that's clear, even though that signage is not there. I also have cameras on the property, so that I can verify and prove the guests entering and exiting the home. I have a friend who lives five minutes away, who will be checking on the house and cleaning after each stay. She can help me with anything I need. Her son cares for the lawn weekly, which is a much better arrangement than before, when the college kids were supposed to be mowing. I'm confident that my home will be better maintained as a short-term rental than it has been as a long-term. Furthermore, I have shared phone numbers with four of the closest neighbors on my street, so they can and have reached out to me when they have had concerns. Each time, I have addressed the concerns immediately. I have not met the neighbors behind me, but if they so desire, I am happy to exchange numbers. I will be staying at my home for every football game with my friends, so quite possibly, the most concerning weekends for my neighbors won't be an issue with unknown renters anyway. In the end, the S T R market may be saturated when these dates are excluded, and I may have to sell the home anyway. Finally, I was told when inquiring about the S T R process back in May, that there were two other licenses granted in the Westwood Overlay District. I have found at least three other homes listed on Airbnb in the neighborhood. I appreciate your time, and do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the Commissioners?
So, your friend that lives five minutes away, you said, for the most part, she's going to be managing the property while you're not here?
When I need her, yeah. She'll clean, and she'll, I mean, they come over, and every time it rains, we have to deal with the pool that's in the backyard that I have a cover over. I'm trying to, I want to fill it in. It's going to take, actually, probably, it absolutely is going to take cooperation from my neighbors, because there's no access. And I'm also waiting for the city is supposed to be doing some work on the easement. There's power lines over there, too, and they're about to buy that part of the property. So, I'm hoping that we can coordinate that, so that we can destroy the pool and make it a backyard again, because I don't, I don't think it's salvageable.
You said you're looking to move to the home yourself. Do you have any-
Sunday. I mean, I have to retire and, you know-
No specific timeline?
No.
So, for the foreseeable future, it would remain in Airbnb?
Correct. That's correct.
And you're using Airbnb V R B O?
Airbnb.
Okay.
I haven't, I mean, I have it listed, because that was a requirement for the application, but it's, all the dates are blocked, so I have not tried it yet, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a list of individuals that wanted to speak this evening, and I'm going to assume that majority of these want to speak on this item, given the other items that we have on the agenda. What we'll do is, I will call first for anyone who wants to speak in favor, and then we'll go down the list in order, in opposition. When you do come forward, as we asked before, please state your name and address for the record. And in the interest of time and in the interest of not repeating items over and over, we're going to have a three-minute timer, and we'll give a one-minute warning in that three minutes. So, at this time, I would like to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to start at the top of the list, and that would be Pamela Oaks. No? Okay. Pass. All right. Next on the list is, is it Mark Weiser?
I put the other one.
You're, you're in the other one. There you are. You're on item B. Okay. David Oaks?
No.
No? Larry Tower?
Yes.
Right?
My name is Larry Tower. I live at 2121 West Third, which is the corner of Isler and Third. I've been there 49 years. A couple of years ago, a person had been inebriated from across the street at a party at a college house, and ran into my house. It took out 18 feet of my wall in front of the, in front of the house and bordered on the walkway. That neighborhood, it, to me, it just doesn't fit. It's mainly older people, been there for years. I just, for some reason, just, just don't think it, it works there. We have neighbors that have small children that live on the corner of Third and Island also, and they use that street to run up and down on Saturday morning and Sundays when they get up and play. It's just, it's really always been a quiet, nice area to live in. And I, I just, I just don't think that, that kind of business fits, honestly, I don't. But I appreciate you hearing me out, if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. The next name I have on the list would be Rodney Will.
Hi. 2114 West Third, right across from Isler. And I'll let-
Sir, can you bring the microphone closer?
Yeah. 2114 West Third, right across from Isler. And to avoid repetition, I'll let Gary Clark speak in depth about the concerns that some of us have. But I would just say that the Overlay District exists for a reason, and what I worry about is the enforcement of the Overlay District when there's people signing up, regardless of best intentions.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, they're also on the same line, there's Susan Little.
Hi. Susan Little, 2114 West Third. The concern with an Airbnb in a quiet family neighborhood is pretty self-evident to those of us that have lived around rental houses and short-term rental houses. There's no way to prevent those parties. They can put the restrictions in place, the parties are still going to happen, the problems are still going to happen. Really, the only way to prevent it is to prevent the short-term rentals to begin with. And in reading the Overlay District policies, it's pretty clear that it's not allowed. So, I hope that that's how you'll find. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on the list is Hunter Robinson? Nope. All right. Next up, Gary Clark?
I was squeezing in for three minutes.
I, I have no doubt you can do this.
Members of the committee, Commission. Jane and I live, Gary Clark, live at 320 Isler Lane, which is directly across the street from the subject property. We strongly object to the issuance of a short-term rental license. I wish, I was going to give you some background about the, the Westwood neighborhood area, which has changed dramatically as a result of that. I don't have time, unfortunately, to do that and to talk about some of the more substantive issues. So, please accept my strong statement that, and the reason, there are a number of people here from the Westwood Neighborhood Association tonight, is because of the change that we've seen in our neighborhood, and we don't want to see it go back the other way. As a result of the council adopting the Overlay District, it provided a restriction of not more than three unrelated persons. And that's, it is clear from the short-term rental ordinance that the requirement of an Overlay District applies. So, it can't be more than three unrelated persons. Unfortunately, Ms. Morris, on her advertisement that was scheduled to be on Airbnb says 10 guests. It also says seven cars if you park in the garage. And personally, I would say you can't possibly get more than six cars, and you would have to move two cars to get one car out of one side of the garage and that sort of thing. It's not realistic. She also says in the advertisement that you can go and park on Third Street, on Third West Avenue. So, park in front of other people's houses to manage these 10 guests that she has provided. And again, I would point out that the, the ordinance on the short-term rental says, this division, or any section thereof, is not to be, oops, I'm sorry, reading the, the second one. This division or any section therein shall be subject to any applicable Overlay District or provision therein, or zoning restriction, unique to that particular area or parcel. So, it's, it's clear that not more than, pardon me?
We've got one minute, sir.
Okay. All right. In addition, there, there is a restrictive covenant agreement that applies to the property, to the property she has, as well as mine and a number of others. That, that restrictive covenant agreement says not more than two unrelated parties. So, if you were to grant this application, it would be in, basically in violation of that restrictive covenant agreement. I guess, long and the short of it is, by the way, the effect of the proposed specific use upon the character of the neighborhood, the traffic conditions, the public utilities, drainage, and other matters related to the general welfare may also be considered by this Planning Commission and by the City Council, if it gets there. We urge you, please, please, to recommend denial of this request. To do otherwise, would be putting your stamp of approval on an out-of-state owner's running businesses in our neighborhood. And the number-one indicator of rundown neighborhoods is out-of-state ownership. There are a number of other neighbors here tonight. I'd ask those who object to hold up their hand, please.
Sir, you need to address the question.
Beg your pardon?
Oh. You don't need to address the question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next one we have on the list is Hillary Hunt.
Good evening. I'm Hillary Hunt. I'm at 2111 West Third Avenue. It's the property directly to the north of this home in question, so we share a property line. Although we, we have appreciated good renters over the last two years, I'm the mother of those three small children that ride their bikes along Isler every Friday and Saturday and Sunday. And it's, it's a place, because I know my neighbors, and then because it's a quiet family neighborhood, that I feel safe letting them do that. And it's something that is, I think, a fundamental part of their childhood, and my biggest concern is not only that these cars that are not going to be able to park in the driveway are going to be parking along my property to the north along Isler, but I just can't trust that out-of-state visitors or people that aren't familiar with the neighborhood aren't going to drive in an unsafe way that directly impacts the safety of my children on that street. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next name on the list is Marshall Baker.
I'm Marshall Baker. I live at 2020 West Third Avenue, which is just down the street on Third Avenue from the property of being discussed. I would just affirm some of these same things. I think all of us that live in this neighborhood, we recently purchased a property that had been left unattended for quite some time by an out-of-state owner. We convinced that out-of-state owner to sell us that property, and we've invested a lot in renovating it, because we believe so much in the Westwood Overlay. So, we're a part of the new generation that Gary has called to like, continue to invest in this neighborhood. All of us know what happens in short-term rentals and long-term rentals, and we can see when these kind of decisions are made. It impacts parking, it impacts density. And a few things, I have Hillary's three kids, friends are my two boys, and this cul-de-sac where the property of interest is, is positioned, is kind of a place where the kids congregate, because it's a cul-de-sac in this neighborhood, which is rare. So, to have that many cars and that much traffic going up and down the streets unaware of the children that are playing in those streets, they walk to the school, they walk to the park down the way, this is really concerning. And I think, you know, the only thing we have is that this group would hold to the Westway, Westwood Overlay, the intent of that overlay. And though I appreciate the sentiment of the story, out-of-state owners that do not have a daily interest are different. I live there every day. And so, we see this problem. You're going to see more of these problems come to you as we try to maintain the integrity of the Westwood Overlay. The other thing I would just ask you to consider is, in these areas where the short-term rentals or long-term rentals are, in some of these situations where they try to park and the parking spills over into other places, this is also a main thoroughfare for Westwood's pickup and drop-off lines. And so, one other problem that we've seen is when some of these places have cars that are parked all over the place, all of us that live there, we have two or three cars, they fit in our driveway. We don't, you know, take up the whole block. If these, these short-term rentals, as the cars start to park and move around, what'll happen is, they'll park, they've been doing whatever, and they don't wake up and go to work, or they don't wake up and take their children. And then all their cars are still in the street. And when all the parents come through the normal traffic flow to get to the school- And so one other problem that we've seen is when some of these places have cars that are parked all over the place, all of us that live there, we have two or three cars, they fit in our driveway, we don't, you know, take up the whole block. If these, these short-term rentals, as the cars start to park and move around, what'll happen is, they'll park, they've been doing whatever, and they don't wake up and go to work, or they don't wake up and take their children. And then all their cars are still in the street. And when all the parents come through the normal traffic flow to get to the school, it causes a major disruption when these cars are impacting Third Avenue, which is the backside of Westwood's pickup. So, in addition to everything people have said, we adamantly request that you guys deny this and maintain the integrity of the overlay that we're really proud to maintain and build as a special place in Stillwater. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next name on the list is Bob Grollman. No. Next name, Mike Martin. Nope. Okay. And then last name I have on the list is Ann Berry. Nope. Okay. All right, that is everyone that we had on the list to speak this evening. At this time, we would give, we'll close the public hearing and give the applicant time to address any of the items that have been raised, if she would like.
Thank you. I, I would just wanna say that I hear all of their concerns and have them as well. And I will remove the parking statement that they can park on Third Street from the listing. And other than that, I think I've said everything else that I need to say.
All right. Thank you. We could hear from, I guess staff, you, you only have the alternatives for us, correct? Okay. All right. Commissioners, are there any questions or a motion? Any discussion? I do have one question for, for legal counsel. There was made mention of the overlay district violation. My question in my mind, I do understand that the restrictive covenants, while the city cannot uphold the restrictive covenants, we can consider them in our deliberations. How does that work with the overlay district violation that was referenced earlier?
The overlay, the overlay district ordinance says, the Westwood overlay district ordinance says that, or prohibits four or more unrelated persons. So any violation of that would be the, the same as any other violation of a zoning ordinance that, you know, with the city, and would be enforced in that same mechanism. The restrictive covenant would, is an agreement between the landowners, and so it would have to be enforced by a landowner against a landowner, and we wouldn't have anything to do with enforcement of that. Am I answering your question?
You did answer my question. Thank you.
The applicant mentioned that there are a couple other, maybe three other Airbnbs within the neighborhood. So were those approved after the overlay and basically in contrast to what the overlay said? Or were those like grandfathered in prior, because they were approved prior to the overlay?
Those were approved recently. The Westwood overlay, as an ordinance, was adopted much prior to those.
Two thousand and eleven.
And I believe currently there are six other short-term rental licenses that were issued in the Westwood overlay district.
I know, I, I found two listed today when I went and looked on Airbnb besides the subject property, but I cannot recall the number of bedrooms or the occupancies of those.
So then it's on the land, I'm just still trying to fully understand. So then it's on the other landowners, other property owners within the Westwood district to bring some sort of charges against those people? Or it's just, it's just a covenant that basically we're just saying, we're gonna allow it anyways?
If, if the landowner allowed for, for or more unrelated people to use the house-
It's three.
It should be three?
It's three.
Three or more unrelated people to use the house, then that would be a violation of our zoning ordinance regarding the Westwood overlay district, and we could have, the city could enforce it as a code violation. There is also a restrictive covenant, which is the agreement between the parties that runs with the land, usually with the homeowners association or whatever, when they originally create the, the neighborhood, that says that there can't be more than two unrelated people in the home. So we could enforce, if there's three, more than, three or more, right? Three or more? And the homeowners would enforce if there's two or more, if I'm understanding the restrictive covenant correctly. One option that you would have would be to make compliance with the overlay district regulations a condition of this permit, so that if there was a violation of our zoning ordinance, not the restrictive ordinance, but of our zoning ordinance, it could, I think if I'm remembering right, be considered as to any renewal of the license. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Did I just confuse matters?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other information that maybe we might like to see that we don't already have?
Well, I'm at a quandary here. We have a overlay district that does not allow for occupancy by more than three unrelated people, but there have been approved STRs in this overlay district, which establishes some degree of precedence. But we don't know that in those STRs that there are more than three unrelated individuals. There could be, but we don't know that. Is that the situation?
Well, first of all, I would, I would just say, in my legal opinion, there's no precedent set. Every case that you see will be new and different, and, but to answer your question, those other license holders or people who have been approved now are subject to the exact same requirement, which is no more than three unrelated people. So if there is a violation, then it would affect them in the same way. And, but, yes, there's no really, there's no way of saying at this point that they're violating it, that they're allowing, because it could be a family that's renting or whatever.
And we have, do we have evidence that there has been disruptive behavior of these other STRs that are reestablished in the Westwood overlay?
Not that staff is aware of.
I guess I have a question. Am I, so, is there a, a threshold or some sort of crossing the barrier between if you live here, if you live in this overlay and you own a home and you have a bunch of friends over, and they're not spending the night, and they're not living there with you, but they're unrelated to you, and then you have, you're a rental and they are spending, is there, is there, is it that you spend the night that is violating the, the ordinance? Or is it that they spend a couple hours, like, could, I'm just trying to imagine, trying to imagine somebody who wants to have friends over that are not related to them, that's a one-night type of deal? Is that against the overlay as well?
So, in the Land Development Code, in Section twenty-three dash one fifteen point one, which is the, which is the section on residential short-term rentals, it defines residential short-term rental as any dwelling, portion thereof, or habitable accessory structure for rent for a temporary period of time up to thirty consecutive days per guest within a ninety-day period. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to kinda see what are the, the boundaries between having somebody over for a short time, or if you're the only person with your name on the Airbnb, but a couple people fall asleep in your place. I'm just, I, it seems like it's kinda hard to really get, again, with this. Anyway, I'll, I understand, it's not my line of questioning.
Where, where in the twenty-three-two-seventy-five does it say, which is the overlay district's ordinance?
No, I'm looking at the residential short-term rental section.
I know, but I think the answer to his question's going to be... And the other one. Okay, the, the ordinance, overlay district ordinance says no more than three unrelated persons may occupy a single dwelling unit in the Westwood Neighborhood Conservation District.
I guess to refine my question, the word occupy is, is what I'm asking about. What's the threshold to determine-
Let me just answer your question by saying the word occupy is not defined in the definition section of this ordinance.
If I remember right, back when I was involved with the Neighborhood Alliance and the Westwood neighborhood was one of the battlefields, there was a election at the time to prevent parking in yards and to prevent more than three unrelated people renting residence, because oftentimes there were vastly more than three. So my question here is not to be too pedantic, but it seems like the intent of the overlay district, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was to prevent longer-term rental to people who were unrelated and have more than three of them in that structure. I don't know, the, the intent was to limit the timeframe or include the timeframe of maybe a two-day weekend. So I'm trying to understand the intent of the overlay district restriction of no more than three unrelated people.
The, under Section twenty-three dash two-seventy-five point three, which is titled "Purpose," it says, "The purpose of the Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District is to facilitate preservation of an existing single-family residential neighborhood by establishing limitations and special requirements on property uses within said area." And it goes on, but I think that pretty much covers it. I'll hand you my phone and you can read the rest if you'd like. Okay.
I don't really see a practical way to enforce that or check that anyway. I don't know how, for a short-term rental, you're gonna determine that people are related or unrelated. Are they gonna sign an affidavit or something? I, I just don't see that. So it's an interesting provision, but I, I just don't see the practicality of it. It might apply more to a long-term rental where you had time to, to deal with that.
But even the long-term rentals in that neighborhood, I know for a fact, have had three or more unrelated people living in them, at least in the last five years.
So someone has to raise that as a concern.
I guess my point is, is that that's happening in that neighborhood very frequently, whether it's long-term rentals or short-term rentals as is.
You know-
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that I would think that noncompliance is a reason to not ask that that be held to with this particular item. Because that could certainly be taken up under other avenues. I think as a, as a planning commission, we could certainly reinforce that the condition of the Westwood overlay district must be upheld with this application. And I do, I do agree a little bit with Commissioner Shanahan, not, not to disregard legal, legal advice, it, it does feel to me a little bit like there's already been a bit of a precedent set when there are other short-term rentals in the Westwood overlay district. But it does seem like that all of them should be complying with the overlay.
I agree with that.
I think I would also say that of all the applicants that come before us to, to make a request, that this applicant answered all the questions that we typically have in a way that we'd like them answered before we asked them. The two nights, the no local stays, no auto booking, no party policy, and even willing to change the parking and pull people off of Third Street, so. But at the same time, I don't know that we've had a more cohesive neighborhood response to the application either, so. It's challenging, so.
I would agree with that. So is there any other information that we've discussed this evening that we don't feel we've got a satisfactory answer that we would need to ask for additional information?
I mean, can we ask for additional information as to how the applicant would comply with the overlay?
Can you ask the applicant additional questions?
Well, I mean, how, can we ask the applicant to show us how they could comply with the overlay?
Right now?
As a contingency, yeah. Yes.
Sure. You're saying call her back up?
You could call her back up, or put it as a table this until next meeting with the applicant, then coming back to show us how they could comply with the overlay. Either or.
I, I don't know why we couldn't do that. Ms. Morris?
Thanks for the question. I have been on a Facebook page, social media page, with short-term rental owners, and there is a way that you can get their, you can, you can make them do, make anybody do anything if they wanna stay in your house, basically. So you can get their IDs to verify who they are. I don't know how to do it. I can, I will be, I can research it and find out. And honestly, the home isn't ready to, to rent out to other people anyway at this point, so. But I do know that there is a way that you can vet the people besides just their rating system. You can insist that they provide who all will be there, so.
So you could comply with the overlay if that was needed?
Yes. I think most people that are going to rent it will be families, actually, so. My family has, has rented beach houses, and so my parents and my brother and, we've all been there, and we can fill up a house very fast with just our family.
Could it be something where, I guess if you have rules about parking and partying, could it just be in that same area where you have the other rules?
Absolutely.
Saying, you know, just use the verbatim terminology from this overlay-
Yes.
And say, that's how you, you know, at, at least as an initial way of getting about it.
Yes, I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone considering a motion?
You've got three minutes.
Well, Chair, Chair can move. I'd move to recommend approval of the short-term rental application with the condition that the rental comply with the Westwood overlay district. Requirements.
Second.
We have a motion- We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes five-zero. Next item on the agenda is a preliminary plat, S U B twenty dash oh-two.
I'm going to wait a minute. Pardon it down a little bit. The next item on the agenda is a preliminary plat for Park Valley addition. At the May second meeting, Planning Commission meeting, this was approved with condition for the verification of ownership of the subject property. Since this was an approved with a condition, the preliminary plat must come back to the Planning Commission for review. So I wanted to give you a refresher of the proposed preliminary plat. The subject property is located in the southeast corner of Southwestern and West Twenty-Sixth. Fry Farms is located to the south. Till Ridge is located to the northwest of the subject property. The property is currently zoned RSS. The 2030 comprehensive plans, future land use map, shows the desired use to be a high-density. The proposed preliminary plat is, is three-hundred-and-one lots and eight outlots with access to West Twenty-Sixth and Southwestern. There is a slight change in this current proposed plat from the one that was proposed in May. The utility along lots one through sixteen, Block One, have been reduced to ten feet to accommodate a few items from the previous fifteen feet. The applicant has provided the verification of the ownership. The applicants are here tonight. If you have any questions, are there any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question. In the report to the Planning Commission from staff, it says, "At the time of this report, improvements have not been considered substantially complete by the City Engineering Department." So those improvements aren't necess, aren't necessary to be complete until final plat?
Yes, yes. Preliminary plat is just stated in there for your reference. For the final plat, substantially complete is a thing that must be considered.
What were those improvements?
I will defer to Andy, who is our engineer.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Andy Dorflinger. I'm with the City Engineering Group, and I'm responsible for development review and approval. And I also look at developments. We do, I have a team of inspectors. And what they hadn't improved are the improvements that weren't complete at the time that this report was written, were drainage-related. There's some drainage flumes that were on the property line, or I would call it the property line with Fry Farms, that have since been completed. As of this date, it's substantially complete. There are a few drainage flumes that are associated with some retaining walls. Those retaining walls are being, still being constructed. Once those are complete and the fill is in, they'll have those, but those are all within the development. And we're trying to manage that, we will manage that with a development agreement. So before anything gets approved by, before they're allowed to have building permits, we, we do a final acceptance inspection. That ensures that all the paving, drainage, everything's installed and complete. At that time, then we write a letter that notifies them that they're complete. That has not happened yet, so we're still in that stage where we're inspecting as they complete it.
Okay, thank you for the response.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jaclyn. At this time, I'd like to ask if the applicant and/or their representative would like to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, eight-fifteen, West Main, Oklahoma City. One point of clarification here, I think the question that you asked about the improvements had to do with the final plat application, which is going to be heard later this evening after this item. This is actually for the preliminary plat, and so those improvements, I don't think, apply to that application. I think some of you were here in May when I was here, when we voted on the revised preliminary plat, and I kind of told my story that this preliminary plat had originally been approved in May of 2020, and since then, the final construction plans for Section One were approved. That's the final plat that we're voting on later this evening. Those improvements, as Andy said, are almost completely done. Since that time, Section Two construction plans have been approved, and Section Three. So the reason we're really here tonight is because of the ownership question that came up at the May meeting of this year. I just wanted to clarify those points. On behalf of the answering questions, my head.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
All right. The findings, the findings are currently, the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision and zoning requirements. There's ongoing building of, of infrastructure for various phases of the improvement plans. C-three, our comprehensive plan, recommends, that should say, high-density use at this location. The proposed density is in alignment with an RSS zoning requirements. The ordinance requires a revised preliminary plat prior to the final plat be presented and approved by this board. Your alternatives tonight are accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented, approve the proposed preliminary plat with conditions, noting what conditions should be met for the approval of the final plat, reject findings and deny the proposed preliminary plat as presented, find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a decision, table the request to a certain date, noting the action must be taken within sixty days of the public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions from staff on the findings? Anyone considering a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes five-zero. We'll now move on to the general orders portion of the agenda, and the first item there is a final plat, S U B twenty dash fourteen. Well, here comes Jaclyn again.
Yes. Continuing on, since the preliminary plat was approved, this next item is for Park Valley addition, Section One final plat. Section One is located along the southern portion of the previously approved preliminary plat that has access off of Southwestern. Section One contains fifty-eight residential lots and three outlots. I want to state briefly that the posted reports' findings are incorrect and are going to be presented to you after this item.
So on this item, we'll hear the staff presentation, we can discuss, and then take action on this item. Any discussion on the final plat?
Do we want to talk about this letter that we have in regards to the West Twenty-Sixth and Western Roads? The letter of objection, basically, to these plats is talking about Western and Twenty-Sixth not being able to handle the amount of traffic that this neighborhood is going to add, and it looks like we might have an answer.
I think we have an engineer who might answer that question.
Yeah, we sure do. So there's a couple of things going on. Actually, there's three steps to this process. Currently, we have plans for a left-hand turn lane, both into Fry Farms, which is to the south of this one, and this housing division, which is Park Valley on Western. So that, that, they did a traffic impact analysis as part of the development for both of these developments, looking at the increase in traffic on Western. And currently, that is what is required today. And when they finish developing and connect the road that goes from this part of the development up to Twenty-Sixth, they're going to have to make improvements at the intersection of Twenty-Sixth. So those are all in plan. Right now, I've just reviewed a fifty percent set of plans for the left turn lanes, and those are what are required right now. When they connect to Twenty-Sixth, that's when the improvements will happen on Twenty-Sixth. The engineering, excuse me, the engineering department is also doing an evaluation on Western. The, that scope is still being developed, but it's going to look further to the north. I know the letter commented on things that are beyond the scope of this development. We're looking at the corridor as a whole to make certain that we ensure that that remains a safe corridor. It's a minor arterial. We know from this traffic impact study that it is going to add traffic, and we are aware that this needs to be addressed, and it will be. So that's still in the planning stages, so...
I know there was a presentation made by engineering and city staff back in, what was it, 2019? Which discussed a long-term traffic infrastructure plan, I think included looking at more improvements along Southwestern and extending out even to Sixth Street. Has that study been looked at again?
This is going to be the refresh of that, so...
Okay.
There is an ongoing ODOT project at the intersection of Sixth and Western. It starts there. It's going to improve those intersections, so we're looking at that. And then this study is going to go from basically there, south to Thirty-second. So it hasn't, we're not, we don't have a consultant yet. We're, we're still kind of in the early stages of developing the scope for that project, but for the near term, for these developments, the improvements are going to be done, and, like I said, some of it's already being designed.
Okay, thank you.
One more question?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just, it seems like, and you can tell me if I'm looking at it incorrectly, it's, when you make, when we approve the final plat, there, there's a big assumption that the studies will end with a solution that's achievable. So that, I guess we have to make that assumption, or where, where along the...
Yeah, they're achievable. I don't think there's an issue as far, it's just a matter of funding, you know, and priorities. So the, the developers are paying for at least a portion, if not all, of the improvements in the immediate vicinity, so on Western, at Twenty-Sixth, and at, yeah, at, at the entrances, so it'd be Thirtieth and Twenty-Ninth. So that part, we know. The part that we don't know is there's a ton of development that's happening outside the city, south of here. That's contributing a lot of traffic to this area. So it's a bigger impact that's going on, you know, in the county that we need to consider as we look at, at this road. We have looked at traffic counts, we're, we're aware, that's why we're, we're going to do this, so... And I think, I don't, I can't commit to a timeline or anything like that yet, so... But it is going to happen. It's on our, it's on the top of our list, so... I don't know if that helps.
I'll pitch in a little bit. The traffic impact study was for the full development. This is a portion of that development, so the impact won't be as significant until we get all phases of both developments there in this section.
And the other thing I can say is that we did look at traffic counts, and we are not in a poor position right now compared to what people recommend. We always like to be ahead of the curve. So as this development happens, the intersection at Twenty-Sixth will be in a poor condition, and that, that will have to be improved sooner than, I mean, in conjunction with this connection from this housing division, as Park Valley gets built out, it will be improved, so...
So then I guess my question would be, is when, when the two, when the access is connected between the two developments, is that the trigger at which the Twenty-Sixth intersection becomes a go project?
So it's difficult to see, but if we go, can I go back to the final, or preliminary plat slide? If you look, I don't, don't know, but at the top of the screen in the middle, that is the connection that I'm talking about. That goes on to Twenty-Sixth. So otherwise, all the traffic's coming off this, this area where we're putting the left turn lanes.
And then it's really hard to read at this scale, but do we know which, this is the first section that we're looking at this evening, do we know which section this one is where that connection will happen?
I think it's Section Two, from what I recall. Yeah, okay.
Section Two.
Because I reviewed those plans, yeah. So, and then, yeah, Section Three is to the left, so, and I think there's a fourth one that's not, I haven't seen yet, so...
So the connection will be made prior to the third, well, we, I'm, I'm just assuming that we'll go in chronological order. I know that isn't always the way it works, but I'm going to make that assumption that it will go in chronological order, so it appears that the connection will be made before the final plat's made for the entire three-hundred-plus lots.
Correct. Yeah, it'll be required.
And that would be the trigger to, trigger the intersection improvements at Twenty-Sixth, which seems to be the more critical, if I understand?
That's what the traffic impact study analysis showed, and the, you know, that Penn-Tale connection to Twenty-Sixth is a trigger to evaluate that and to get the, it constructed.
I'm just curious, is it, it seems like there's likely to be a stoplight there. I don't know how you could not...
We, that, that's part of the, the thing that we need to figure out. So there was also a, a look at roundabouts, but I don't know if that's going to happen. So it's more likely going to be a stoplight. I think the immediate improvements that were recommended in the TIA, if I'm correct, is the right turn lane, so that it just makes the traffic work easier, so...
I love the roundabouts, but the Stillwater needs training.
I think we all do sometimes. Yield, right?
We're not there yet.
No, we're not there.
Any other questions for staff?
Well, I don't really have a question, but there's a comment that I drove down Twenty-Sixth this week, and it's just not, it's not a good road. It's not in good shape, so putting more traffic on it doesn't, I mean, I guess it'll be dealt with somehow.
Yeah, I, so, and this is kind of off the, the subject. We do have a, we just, we have a study going on, on condition, basically a condition assessment on all our roads, so out of that study, that will determine, you know, which roads get overlaid, which roads get improved, so we are working on that, too. That's, that's part of this, that's, that study will determine kind of the next five-year plan as to what roads get repaired, and, you know, there's a lot of priorities, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone entertaining a motion?
A motion to approve the final plat as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote.
What?
No, it's not.
Okay. Can you give us a verbal? Yes. You accept the motion on the floor? Yes. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, then, next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible actions. One item we have listed is that the next Planning Commission meeting is September 12th. And the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Oh, staff has something, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't look up Jaclyn.
That's okay. I was waiting for minutes, but, you know. Anyways, I wanted to make y'all aware, our status of our SDR study.
Oh, thank you, yes, please, fill us in.
Yes. We have researched our cities, other cities, for references, what they have done. We have met internally and are working on kind of a preliminary draft of the text amendment for this. We will present that to you all, so you have, you can have your inputs and everything. But at this time, that's where we're at. We're pre-pre, but we have done the research for that.
I look forward to hearing that.
Sorry.
Is there anything that you can't, have talked about or thought about in terms of, like what we experienced tonight, making sure that all short-term rentals are in compliance with any neighborhood overlays or?
So with that, it goes back to, it's just a regular ordinance, it's a regular property. Code enforcement would enforce those. Now, if there's anything more in-depth that needs to be presented, which we haven't seen in our research that's been put for STRs, because it's going to be kind of blanketed. But there are a couple of cities that have a process in which, if there are concerns for the neighbors during the operation of an STR, they can submit, and we can put that in consideration for the renewal. That was a few things that were, a couple of cities did.
Thank you.
Just an FYI, one of the gentlemen who spoke against the STR two weeks ago on Wildwood mentioned about Dallas, so I looked that up, and Dallas has recently voted to ban short-term rentals in single-family zone districts.
Interesting. And another, so, and as I stated before, other states have banned restrictions of STRs because it's considered a private property. It goes along the lines of long-term. And so they're like, you can't touch it. You can do a license.
Interesting discussion.
Yes, yes. It's very interesting, but with those states, we did Ames, I was trying to think of where Iowa State is, I believe, anyways. They have licenses that they do for all rentals. That keeps it from being, you know, subjective to just short-term rentals. It's all rentals, and they keep that database, and they have to renew, and they have a life safety inspection every time they renew their license.
I think that would be wonderful for a university town like we are, and Ames is certainly something very parallel. So are the communities you're setting, they would parallel Stillwater in size and kind of, like makeup?
Yes, we did a little bit of everything, because we did small and large. We kind of did Guthrie, we did Lawton, Broken Arrow, Manhattan, Enid, Norman. Enid, Guthrie, does it say Guthrie? We did Guthrie, too. We did about 15 cities, is what we ended up doing, and they're all about this, about that range and different stages of development and density.
Sounds great. I look forward to hearing that.
I can also tell you that our comprehensive plan is coming soon, like the contract.
All right, you're full of all kinds of teaser information tonight.
It is being presented to City Council on 9/18 for the contract with Rees &amp; Nichols.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. We're now adjourned.